Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 16th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. First, let me congratulate and thank my illustrious vice chair and Dexter, our illustrious vice chair, for running a superb meeting while I was away. And let me also point out that this meeting is held under an emergency executive order by the governor, which has been extended to March 16th, which allows public officers to meet virtually as we're doing now. Let me first, before we start, confirm that every board member and alternate is either alone or without someone trying to tell you how to vote. Mr. Gercio?
Yes, I'm alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I'm alone.
Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Mr. Kane?
I'm alone.
And let me welcome Mr. Kane as well, our brand new planning board alternate. A quick aside, our other alternate is named Victoria Kane, but they are not related, just so everyone knows. Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Mr. Waters?
I'm alone.
And Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
Please show me first and pledge the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Camp Victory Lake. As a reminder, this application is replaced as well as the state. They say we're referring to that because it's a very large church that will not just have religious programming, but also other kinds of events inside there, including performances. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'm moved. Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And Weiser?
And Weiser, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sander? We have a new submission. Good to see you. We've reviewed the latest, we've reviewed the latest submission in depth. What we're considering doing was tonight, we believe it's still too early to make a seeker determination, even though, as I understand it from talking to my colleague, I shouldn't say my colleagues, the co-chair of the ZBA, it appears they're ready to take action, but they're unable to until we complete seeker. Because we still have to deal with the Department of Public Works for the traffic study, the entrance, what they're going to require. We think it's better to wait to do the secret termination until we hear back from them. So we're going to, just so you know, adjourn the public hearing of this to May 18th. The reason why is because if you need to workshop this at any point, we can put you right back on, but we won't have to continually adjourn and open and adjourn, adjourn, adjourn. It saves your client money as well as, I think, can expedite the process.
Did you mean May?
I did, May 18th. That's what I was going to ask for.
Okay, alright.
I think it's going to take, Mr. Sotero can weigh in when I call on him, but I think it's going to take a while for DCDPW to kind of weigh in. If you recall, on Dollar General on East Dorsey Lane, they gave us a tentative approval. And then when they finally looked into it, it took them almost eight months to work with the applicant to come back and revise everything we had to reopen the public here. So anyway, that's where our thoughts are. Do you have anything to add, Peter, yourself?
I take no exception to that. We know exactly how DPW works. Me and Peter are very familiar with it. So I think that's a perfect course of action on that. So yeah, but I also wanted to just kind of take this meeting also to introduce a few changes that we did to the site plan.
Yeah. I'll trade over to you.
Perfect. So yeah, so as you guys know, we've been back and forth in front of the ZBA and Planning Board, working on several variances. One is a stream corridor encroachment, and then the other, the height variance. So based off of last meeting, some of the board members had some concerns for the location of proposed cabins, which, as if you recall, we had them located up on top of a hillside. So the intent of that was to overlook Victory Lake and kind of give it a more of an aesthetic appeal to those cabins. But based on continued concerns from the ZBA and us just also looking at the grading and seeing what's going to be a more feasible and economically, an economic better opportunity for the camp, we decided to move those cabins further down or further to the west of the site. And so a couple of good things about that is that, one, it's no longer within the stream corridor encroachment. So there's now no proposed structures within that buffer zone, just the parking facilities. Two, it allows for less grading within there. So we were able to kind of reduce the extent of the grading that goes towards Victory Lake. So overall, slightly less disturbance in that area. And yeah, those are essentially the two main ones. And so we kind of are hoping to get good feedback from the planning board. I believe we're going to get some good feedback from the zoning board as well on that.
Thank you for highlighting those. I did notice that the cabins have been moved. And I hope you also saw that we made positive recommendations to the ZBA for their variances that you were seeking.
Yes, no, that was very appreciated. And I also wanted to note that we've actually added some additional plantings because the zoning board mentioned their concerns. And that is really the intent of the stream corridor buffer is to preserve continuous wildlife habitat. So we actually enhanced our landscaping plans to provide, sorry, I'm just going to try to find it. A no-mo zone. So that's the idea that that area won't be mowed. So allow it to kind of retake some of that natural flora and fauna. We also have an additional couple of gardens. And so these are based off of native plantings and recommendations from the board members. And so we had one of our guys come up with a pretty cool planting scheme. And he, the way that this is designed is that it provides edible plantings, berries, nuts to the native species. So the idea is that with creation of the no-mo zone and some of these more specific plantings that we really are enhancing the area within the buffer to kind of make up for placing some of the parking area within it. So that's also our intent. And then I also wanted to point out that we revised the retaining wall detail based off some board comments. So before, we had a cast concrete retaining wall. So now we switched to a ready block retaining wall. So that, as the board kind of recommended, it gives a better aesthetic vibe to it. And it actually ultimately, once we started crunching the numbers a little further, provides a greater economic benefit for the applicant as the, right? Isn't that awesome? But it's because the extra manpower going into the concrete wall would actually cost more than to provide the blocks. So ultimately, it was a win-win for both of us.
And we're hearing, no quickly, that was Mr. Oliver who made that recommendation. Congratulations, Chris.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So yeah, other than that, I believe, we also run into an extensive amount of questions from the various agencies between the zoning board, Dutchess County Health, the CAC. So we believe that we pretty adequately responded to all those comments.
Thank you. Let me start with our consultants. Ms. Franzen, any comments?
So I have been looking over the modifications and in particular, just so we can advance seeker, I'm looking over the submissions and I'll have a memo. I think much of it is there, but I just want to make sure that everything has been addressed if we were to look at the part two and, and, you know, assess again whether all the components of the seeker analysis is in place, both for phase one, but we're also doing the master plan. So we also have to make sure that it's touched upon, even if it's generally as part of the master plan process. I did have one question with regard to the cabins, Peter. Do you think they're going to be relocated or you think ultimately you need to reconstruct some cabins there?
We're really intending on relocating them because I believe that they were gifted to the camp as part of a donation. So we really want to preserve that structure just because of that sort of history behind it.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I don't, you know, if ARB review extends to the buildings and if they're really not going to be relocated, but in fact, they're reconstructed, the planning board may want to see what those would look like, but it sounds like you're essentially relocating them.
Yep, that is correct.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure of the integrity and how easy that would be, but that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
That's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bonnie. Mrs. Sotero, comments?
Well, as the chairman mentioned, we had some discussion last week in regards to the DPW. And that in order to feel comfortable making a seeker determination, that we would need at least some initial feedback from them indicating that, you know, they didn't have any major issues with, you know, the project, particularly that we're doing a seeker on the master plan. So Peter's going to make that, you know, submission. I offered to try to help with the DPW to move their, you know, review along. So I guess we'll just wait to, you know, wait to see on that. And then, I mean, from, you know, from our, from our standpoint, I haven't really looked at the plans all that much, only because I knew that, you know, that we weren't going to be taking any action tonight. So we will, but I think most of our engineering items were addressed. I think there was a few minor things remaining on, you know, the SWIP, but nothing that was, you know, going to be an issue. So we'll take a look at the plans. We'll issue a memo, but I don't anticipate anything substantial on our end. The one question I had, Peter, was maybe you touched on it, but the fence on top of the wall, what type of fence was that going to be or was there a detail, you know, for that?
Yeah, so, yes. So we were proposing, sorry, just a railing. We can specify specifically what the board would like to see up there. So really, it was just a railing with final wall designs to be submitted to the building department. If the board has any sit or any opinion on what that fence should be, more than happy to include in the plans.
Well, I think that, I think that the board would want to at least look at the aesthetics of it. And I mean, I would think for that area, we, you know, we might want to look at something maybe a little bit better, like aesthetically than a chain link fence, you know, perhaps like an ornamental type, you know, I don't want to say like picket type fence, but you know, picket type fence. But again, that's something we can iron, that's something we can iron out with the board. So maybe, maybe before the next like public hearing, you can, you know, come up with a couple, you know, like samples that, you know, your client's happy with and send them off to the planning board so they can take, you know, a look at them. But that's really, that's really up to the planning board.
So that was, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sotero. And given the fact that we've worked really hard to make sure the architecture of the sanctuary looks like it does, a real enhancement for our community. I already have ideas myself about what that fence could look like. So I can also write some suggestions and I'll ask board members. But I'm thinking, Wood, you're right, you really wouldn't want to see a chain link metal atop that nice wall. So Ms. Paul Doro, comments?
My colleagues have already addressed, you know, most of the comments. We're still in seeker review. There doesn't appear to be much outstanding. When we do get around to considering the secret determination, though, I'm going to be suggesting that it include thresholds for use of the property. Because even though this is a seasonal use, once it's built, you know, it could be used at a much higher intensity in the future. And so I think I asked the consultants to keep that in mind when they issue their memos so that we can appropriately draft the seeker declaration.
To put that sort of in layman's terms, rather than lawyerly, no, rather than lawyerly, and for Mr. Sanders' benefit too. So the discussion we had was, right now, we are looking at basically using the same programs that are there. But when you have this much better campsite, it may be that in the future you add more and your event plan may become out of date because there may be more people coming or for different periods, more often, the same number, but more often time periods. So we're going to try to condition the seeker on something that if there's new information that we discover, we may have to reopen it. I think you'd be honest about it anyway, but who knows who'll be here during that time. So at any rate, that's what that refers to. And as long as we're discussing seeker, Mr. Sotero, I think that we should probably have some sort of, when you issue your memo, there should be some discussion from your traffic people who've looked through the study. Just want to make sure that goes in there to perfect our secret determination. Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
The engineering for the retaining wall will be reviewed by the town engineer, not the building department. Other than that, I think we have a lot, just about everything covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me start with my colleagues. Ms. Wasser?
I just want to say thank you to the applicant for their responsiveness and continuing to refine based on comments from our board and the ZBA and looking forward to moving it forward.
Thank you. And I have to agree, this is really, as Ann Dexter likes to say, this has really come along now where we're getting close. We just need to conclude seeker and I think we're there. Mr. Waters, comments?
Yeah, there's one comment, a company called McNichol for metal screening that might work well in that upper fence. If you want it metal and low maintenance, if you use wood, there's a maintenance issue with it. But the company you might want to look at is McNichol.
Spelt like the currency?
It's M-C-N-I-C-H-O-L, I think. And what they do is they make all kinds of grading, grading for bridges. You see it at Statue of Liberty, their screening and fencing. So.
Got that modern industrial but rural look. I know what you're talking about now.
Yeah, and they have all different patterns too. They have open patterns, closed patterns, all kinds of things. Really nice.
Okay.
Great input as always, Rob. Ms. Weiser?
Ms. Weiser? No, I would echo Stephanie's sentiments. Thank you very much. I did want to say that the, I do like the new placement of the cabins. I think it creates quite a charming environment for your guests. So I think it was a good idea, good solution.
Thank you. Yeah, it really does create kind of a cozy area as well. So I'm also kind of fond of this relocated. I like the aesthetics of the old, but I like the general coziness of the new cabin spot. So.
Mr. Oliver?
I'll echo my colleagues as well and thank the applicant. I think this is a great example of, you know, our board working with the applicant and the applicant working with our board to get to a better end result. And I remember a few years ago when this first came up and what we're looking at now, I think it's, you know, 110 times better. So thank you very much for all of your responses and changes and hopefully we can get there pretty soon. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for the Ready Rock suggestion. It actually worked out very well. So I was very pleased once we dove into it. Yeah.
Great.
Mr. Gercio, comments?
None for me, none.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Dexter?
It has come a long way. I do, I want to thank my colleagues though, because I think, you know, the retaining, the Ready Rock and, you know, Rob's latest suggestion, I'm just so proud that, you know, we noticed things and we can add. And as you drive by, you can say, I suggested that. But the thing that really throws me and just puts a huge smile on my, I've never heard of an edible beach. So thank you. Once again, we've, we have, we have this new thing that, you know, we can now suggest to people because that's, it's like beautiful. I mean, anyway, never.
I was very, very stoked when my, the guy who I had asked to kind of design this and dive into it and he came up with this, I was like, wow, that's excellent. That goes right for what the, that corridor buffer is for. So I thought it was a very cool addition.
Yes, well, I thank you. And I don't know if you need to copyright that term or not, but it's pretty neat.
You might. I'll let them know.
Okay. But again, thank you for all your efforts. That's all I have, Michael.
Thank you. And I noticed that Tad was grinning while we were talking about the edible beach. I want to thank also Ms. Moss. She did some quick research and sent a list of plants that are suitable for these areas specifically. And she kind of encouraged certain plants because of the berries they would provide for native species of birds, et cetera, as well as butterflies, et cetera. And it's nice to see it. Peter, can you go back and show the plans of where the, what you, I think you made some changes based on county planning department suggestions for the intersections?
Hold on. Which intersection? Oh, yes. Yeah, yes. The master plan intersections, correct?
Yes, sorry, sorry, yes.
Here, I'm pulling them up right now. So yeah, another change that we did to the master plan is that, once the buildout starts to move ahead with this, the previous master plan called for roundabout intersections in these areas. And now we're really trying to straighten them out. We think the county was correct that it will affect traffic flow positively if we did eliminate those roundabouts. So those would be in this area. Nope. Computer never decides to work when I want it to. Yeah. So again, so where those red boxes were, those were previously going to be roundabouts. Now they're proposed to be just right standard intersections.
Reason why I wanted to point that out is that's, that is a fairly large change in many ways. But I personally, when discussed this also at our agenda meeting, I personally think that the more linear intersections are more favorable for pedestrians. So you, I think we're trying to encourage a lot of walking around and movement at this site. So I think that this is actually a better idea because pedestrians always have an easy idea. If even the cars are waiting, trying to figure out and buses, when to pop in. It's even harder for a pedestrian who must cross one of the roads. So I wanted to thank you for that as well. Otherwise, I have no additional comments, other than what my colleague said. I'm eager to see the fence detail and as always, it's great to have board members with such immense knowledge that they can point you out, point you in good directions. Otherwise, that's it. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? I don't believe anybody signed up, Cynthia? Because I recognize everybody's name. And Megan, a motion to adjourn this to May 18th, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
That can strike me, Walter.
I'll let you battle that out, Cynthia, to see who made it. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Deanna, did you want to add anything before we end on this topic?
I just want to say thank you so much for all you do to make this project possible. I really appreciate all the input from the board.
Thank you. And in case you can't tell, the board wants to see this project happen now too.
Yes, I know.
It's going to look great. It's going to look great.
As I do, I see that. I can see that.
Thank you then. And we will see you back in May. But in the meantime, again, remember, Peter, Deanna, if you want, if you need to have a meeting, we can do it offline with a small group, or we can always just put you in a workshop real quickly to discuss any changes.
And what, one question, what happens if seeker closes earlier than May?
If we can close it, we don't have to have a public hearing to close seeker. If we can close that earlier, then we would have, put it in a workshop meeting, we would vote. And then we would immediately inform the ZBA because then they can take actions. That's how that would work.
Okay.
But it doesn't slow you down at all.
Okay, just jacking. Thank you so much.
No, no, no. We do have those thoughts inside. Don't worry.
Okay, okay.
The reason why is because there's a little, there's a strange case law that for subdivisions, you have to close the public hearing before you do seeker, but for site plans, you don't. And it makes more sense to me that you would kind of keep hearing from the public no matter what, but that's okay. That's how it works law. So good question. So we'll see, we'll see you probably in person in warmer weather by May.
Sounds good. Alright, thanks everyone. Have a good night.
Good night. The next item on the agenda is a new application into workshop. It's the Hyde Park Town Center North Building Number Two. Just as a reminder, this is the former Grand Union or Amish Market, depending on how you look at it. It's the biggest building within the site. This is also directly east of the, we'll call it the watch clock garden portion. And this is an application that will be turning a former grocery store use into a general office use. As I understand it, the applicant has not signed the lease yet with the prospective tenant. So we're not going to refer to the actual tenant's name, but it is indeed an office use. Let me turn it over to Ms. Libelton or Amy. I think it's going to be Kelly. Kelly, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your overview. Kelly Libel with KRC Planning. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Okay. Of course, the thing that I'm looking for isn't there. There we go. Let's just start this. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'll just do a quick overview of the project. I know everyone knows where this site is, but I just procedurally, I always do the same steps every time. So I think everyone knows the site. This is the address. It's kind of a complicated address. But this site, the zoning changed on this property, if everyone recalls. So this is now the town core and it's in the sub-district PW1, which sounds very complicated and it is, but it is, the town has been fantastic in working with us to try to unravel this new zoning and the processes and so forth. So the site has four existing buildings. So for some of the new board members that may not be as familiar with the site as some of the older members are, the property here, as you drive by, you probably think it's all one owner, but it's really, there are separate owners on this development project. So the building up here in the corner that has dominoes and there's a barber in here, that's on the property. Feeds Plus is part of this property, the former Amish Market. Or for me, the Grand Union is on the property and then the Mavis Discount and Emergency One. So I'm sorry, there's five. And then of course is the park, you know, in the center of the site. These other two buildings, TEG, Federal Credit Union, different property, different parcel, different owner. The strip mall here in the front where El Guacamole is, different parcel, different owner, different property altogether. So this is a survey. I know it's very hard to see on the screen, but I use this because this is what I have. So, and this was in your packets, I believe. So you can see the property lines here. This is that strip mall in the front. So it's kind of an unusual lot. This is TEG Credit Union. It's unusual. And then everything else is the applicant that I'm working with. The last approved site plan, if everyone remembers, was the approval for Mavis and Emergency One, which is down here in the corner. And then that's when we installed the lovely Town Center Pocket Park with the clock tower at that same time. So there were significant improvements to the property and to the architecture of the plaza. At that time, there were architectural facade improvements, improvements that were approved by this board for every building except the Amish Market. All of those improvements have been implemented with the exception of Feed Plus, which is building number three on this plan. And the Feeds Plus facade approval expires, I believe, in September, either August or September of this year. We're tracking it just to make sure that we don't get close to that expiration. We're hoping to potentially tie those improvements, you know, implementing those improvements when we're able to hopefully implement the improvements to the Amish market. So the proposed plan, and I know this is kind of complicated to look at, but I'm going to switch to another screen in a minute that will make it easier. We provided you with this plan that shows two proposed improvements on this subject property because we thought it was best to include both of these improvements on both applicants' plans. And by that, I mean that there is a pending application that will be before this planning board in the hope, not too distant future, for a proposed ready coffee in the front of the plaza where we have the park. And although both of these actions are type two actions, meaning they're not subject to seeker, and therefore segmentation isn't necessarily an issue, we thought that, you know, full transparency, that it would be a good idea to show you both of the improvements on one sheet because they do potentially affect traffic flow and circulation for either, you know, for the opposite buildings. So what we're proposing is in the former Amish Market building, which is here, and I'm going to go through a different slide, it's easier to see in a minute, is an office use with storage of equipment related to the office use. And approximately five to six employees will be in the space. There is some training that will occur in the space, about, you know, 25 people twice a month. It's not a full day duration, but, so it's limited training that will be coming in periodically throughout the year. There is no reduction in the number of bathrooms. So the same number of bathrooms that are there now will be installed and updated. We do need to seek and obtain Department of Health approval for that discharge. We are actively in front of the Department of Health for that approval. And as we advance that, of course, we'll keep the town and Pete Sotera informed. And as we advance that, of course, we'll keep the town and Pete Sotera informed. This site supports 40 parking spaces. I'm not sure if I'm correct on that count, so I'm just want to make a little mental note that I need to check that. So this project would require, again, this is my read of the code, so I defer to Bonnie and Tad and Pete and this board. This is a type two action, so meaning there's no seeker that's required. Although your code requires that we provide you with an EAF for the submission, there is no seeker review for the project. We would need amended site plan approval, Department of Health approval, and the County 239M review. So this isn't really a blow up of just the Amish market and the building that we are, the subject of this proposal. So what are we doing with the building? Very minimal, I guess I would say improvements, but that is relative. So we are going to convert the inside of the building to office space. And I have a footprint later on in my slide that I can show you. We are going to demolish that blue overhang that I think Tad will probably be the first person with the demo thing to take that down. So we're going to remove that overhang and put up some new architectural treatments. Obviously, interior renovations. We'd like to replace the roof and I want to have another discussion with the board about this tonight. This is a flat roof and so it needs to be replaced. We are going to replace the loading dock. So this is the loading dock that's over here on the south side of the building. We want to remove that loading dock and place a new loading dock in place. And then, of course, the facade improvements. So I would call them diminutism improvements, but some people might look at them as significant. So this is the elevation of the existing building now. And these is, this is a rendering of the proposed improvements, same face. So this blue, you know, overhang will be removed. And we are going to keep the windows essentially in the same place. But obviously, they would all be replaced with new windows and we're proposing the black millions. So the architecture ties into the other architecture on the site. We are proposing a cap on this existing flat roof so that we can, to the extent possible, I know flat roofs are not permitted in this current zone, but this roof has been there and this building has been there for many years. So we're trying to add some architectural treatments to address the flat roof. We've modified and added some metal capping here to try to reduce the overall front facade of the building. And the colors will be very similar to the other colors that are in the plaza. And I'll go through the different sides of the building and the colors and so forth in a minute. So this is a footprint of what the existing building would look like. So this would be the front, the sidewalk. So you're looking down on the building and this would be the front door. So office space in the front, restrooms will be moved up to the front that are currently in the back. And these two large areas are just training, office areas, training areas. The rest of the building will be used for storage of equipment. And these back two rooms will just be open for mechanicals or storage of existing equipment.
Kelly, can I pop in for just a quick moment?
Absolutely.
Well, the equipment area, even though it's described as storage, I was speaking to someone from the potential tenant, we'll call it today. And it's not really just storage. There's going to be pull down electrical things. It's, there's going to be a lot of money spent on that interior. So while it's storage, it's going to be an active storage area, if that makes any sense, because people will be wandering through there to hook up equipment.
This is a very, very, very expensive setup.
Oh, I could, when I heard, when I heard, I was like, whoa, whoa, okay.
So this is kind of a thank you for saying that. This is really a state of the art. And when we, I mean, I think everyone knows who the tenant is, but I cannot state who it is. So it's a very high tech equipment area. It's not just racks with, you know, old computers and so forth there. So it's high tech, high tech, electrical equipment, very, very secure space. And it is a very expensive setup. Okay, so this, these are the four sides of the building and I will provide these in color, but we wanted to just make sure that we got each side. So this front right now is currently brick and what we're proposing is to paint that brick. And then this is a, just a dark, you know, awning that we want to put over the new windows. Let me just see if I can blow this up so you could see this. So most of the property is hardy. If you remember, we did that hardy plank and it's a great product. So we want to introduce, once you take that mansard roof down, we want to put that hardy product here that tries to tie in those similar materials. And we're also proposing to put it, hopefully everyone can see this, okay, on this entire side of the building. And this is the side of the building that faces feeds plus. And if anyone remembers, there was brick there and part of that is collapsing. There's also the other side, much of the brick has collapsed. So we want to put, replace the side of the building with a hardy, we'll clean that all up. The back of it will remain the brick and we'll paint that so it matches. The south side of the building, which is this side, that really faces the hill is the existing brick. There's the loading dock over there. We're simply proposing to paint that, which is the same color. You know, there's no reason to go over that and replace that. It's, it's a great product, but we want to paint that the color of the other materials, you know, so it's similar to some of the other materials on the site. Now, let me just go back. Okay, so that's, those are the elevations again. At this point, I just, you know, I can answer any questions that you have. I'm trying to provide you with as much information as I had. It's a little bit of a different project because of the new code and also being a type two action. So I just identified placeholders for me of things that I wanted to talk to you about as the next steps. I do want to just take one minute to talk about the roof. And I have explained this discussion individually with the chairman and with Pete Sotera. And we have a sort of a timeline due to material shortages. And I know everyone's tired of hearing about material shortages, but in order to get a new roof for this building, roofs are one of the number one challenging products to buy right now. And the new roof is, could be up to six months for us to obtain. And we'd like to put in an order, we'd like to put in a building permit application to replace the roof and put in an order for the roof a month ago. I wanted to have a conversation with this board because I didn't want to preempt and write, you know, a very, very large check for a new roof and find out that this board will not accept or approve a replacement of the roof because it's a flat roof. So we, we, although I know it may be premature, I do need to have a conversation with the planning board tonight as to whether or not you'll accept a flat roof and we can go ahead and make this purchase while we work on perhaps some facade improvements on the front that, you know, you may be agreeable to.
So let me first make a statement that we will indeed have a discussion, Kelly, because we've been working together with you and I for a full 17 years. And further, the code says, it does not actually say no flat roofs. It says no flat roofs except for buildings of a certain size that require it like this. If you had a peak, it'd be ginormous.
It would.
So what, what it actually says is that there's, there must be some attempt at disguising it. It discusses parapets, turrets, things like that. So I'll ask the board to weigh in. Also, when you said that you were putting a, I'm trying to remember how it was written, that you were doing a, not metal capping. It's, you said you were doing something along the top of it to try to disguise it. I, can you zoom in on that? I couldn't quite figure out what that was.
Let me go back to this. So what it is, is, sorry about that. Can you, I don't know if it blew up. Okay, so right here, it's a coping, it's a cap that they propose on the roof that just get, it's an architectural treatment to give the appearance of some detail on the top. So it's not just, you know, a flat parapet that you say. And, and this is new also. So what the architect did was added this metal banding across the front of it because before we just had one flat facade of this roof or one flat facade of this building with no break in it. And so they added that metal.
So we had a discussion about, this is similar to the reuse of the former Stop &amp; Shop and then, and before that shop, right, down at the other end of town. And that became a Saki Brewery. I had neglected to tell them about their need to break up the facade for every, if it's over 100 feet in length, as well as to disguise the flat roof. For those who served on the board during that time, they, the Ngawa, that's going up right now, by the way, I'm excited to say, for our new brewery. And you can see that it breaks up the exterior. They also put in some different courtyards, which are also encouraged to break up the mass of the building. And then they tilted the top of the building, the roof line ever so slightly. So it doesn't appear necessarily flat because you can't look at it and see that it's flat. So it's up to the board to say whether that material lining over the top would satisfy it. And I was reminded by our attorney, Ms. Polidoro, that the language for this section just says no flat roofs are allowed here. But I believe the, the language in 108 dash, 108 dash four does contain the additional things about disguising it. So, but also this is a pre-existing non-conforming building in this district now. So I think we have to consider that as well as we move forward. Because I know that there's time limitations and I don't want to drag this on. This, the use itself, I'm just going to say this straight out. I don't think that any of our residents is going to go, oh my God, great, yay. At the same time, I think that they'll all be saying, oh my God, great, yay to see pretty much bad looking building turn into something attractive and nice. And it will promote activity on the site because there will be workers who need to go to lunch, need to shop, et cetera. We'll have people coming in from other towns, the training sessions. By the way, the training sessions last often about four hours. Sometimes there's a list too, depending on people's experience, if they're being retrained. But all these things create more activity within the center of our community. And I personally believe that's a benefit for our community itself too. So let me start with, and also because you're not, you're not adding on to the building over a certain percentage, this is not subject to the architectural requirements within the new zoning itself as well. So let me start with Ms. France and our consultant, Bonnie comment, initial comments.
Sure. I think as Michael had explained, while this is subject to some extent to a change, it's change of use and site plan approval. The, the town core standards anticipated there would, there would be these pre-existing non-conforming buildings. Non-conforming from the perspective that it's an existing building and it's not going to fit within the town core design standards. So the, the planning board can especially review it for architectural consistency. However, it's also authorized to waive those standards as well, acknowledging that we're dealing with pre-existing buildings. So from my perspective, it's really about the planning board determining and deciding upon what materials make sense for this location, at the same time balancing the reality that this is a pre-existing building. So really, it, it comes down to design, Michael, from my perspective and board members. And to what extent do you need to see changes? And, and what that, should that look like? I think we, at some point, need a little bit more in terms of colors, et cetera, in the elevations. But certainly, I think the applicant needs some input from you before they can move on. And Kelly's already touched upon the roof, you know, questions that she has. So really, that's, from my perspective, where things stand.
Thank you. And I will be asking, in case I didn't make it clear, when I call on each board member, I'm asking you to be sort of directional and help guide the applicants to say, no, I think this does meet the overall architectural standards, or I think it needs some work, et cetera. One last question before I go into the next consultant, I forgot to ask it, Kelly. What are the materials of the new awning? Is that, I notice it's going to lose the wooden, the not very attractive wooden trusses for the old canopy. Is this just going to be attached? Is it metal? Is it, do you know?
Yeah, I do. We actually have a big meeting on Friday to finalize the budget and sign the contracts for this. And so we have two alternatives. So one originally was a structure, like a metal structure. And we had two options. So one was a fabric awning and the other was a metal roof. And we've abandoned that and we're going to actually like a formed overhang, a wooden built formed roof here. And the material is yet to be determined if the board has any preference one way or the other. I mean, the metal roofs right now, it's just, it's very, 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 it's beyond expensive than what it was before. So, you know, we'd like to do something that complements the property. I mean, I think, of course, the metal roof would be the nicest, but I'm not sure if that's going to be, you know, within the budget constraints that we have and the time limitations on materials. So I know that probably wasn't a direct answer, but I will have a better answer on Friday.
That's a good answer. Excuse me, that's a good answer. And I'm going to be calling on Mr. Waters first because, as you know, you've worked with him when he was an alternate member of the board. He has a very keen aesthetic guy, but he also understands materials and has, he's whip smart with the knowledge of how to install them, et cetera. That's also, I want to bring to the board's attention, one of the reasons why I brought up, we don't always see the details of the interior portion of buildings because that's not really part of site plan. And it's often provided as it is now, but when I spoke to one of the persons who runs this, when I saw the, when I was given the details of the expense, there's a lot of money going inside. So I understand now better what the overall budget must look like because the interior buildout is, it's incredibly expensive. So.
It is.
And, and we're not supposed to consider that when it comes to aesthetics of buildings for our town, but it, it's also supposed to weigh in at some point, it's a logical point. So thank you, Bonnie.
Mike, Mike, may I just, I should have added two items. One is in terms of the windows, are they going to be mirror glass? Or you're going to leave it open? Because I think sometimes mirrored glass now just adds to the blank facade look.
They'll be, it'll be open.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and this is just something for the, the planning board and applicant to ponder. There is a, a large area there that's brick and there's nothing on it, you know, because of what it was. And I don't know if there's some way to add something there that's interesting visually, that's not expensive, but that somehow, you know, breaks up that, that sort of mass of brick. You know, I know, I think there are murals already. You know, and I'm not saying that the applicant should put the mural in, but could it be used to some aesthetic visual benefit? Could something be put there? So I'm just throwing that out there and maybe, you know, someone has an idea. Thank you.
In my notes, I'm going to put, is there an architectural embellishment that could break up that mess rather than mural? Just because I would hate to see that become a side of graffiti again and people, graffiti murals often more than they do blank walls even. So that, that's an excellent suggestion. I do see what you're saying. It does look kind of big and massive over there, although I think that the metal capping and the, the the linear portion of the windows versus the other side, don't make it as daunting as it some, as in some places. But that's a great comment, Bonnie. Thank you.
So I, just a suggestion there, and I don't know what the board thinks about this and we can talk to the applicant about it, is that would be a great location for kind of an industrial looking sign identifying this tenant. And so I happen to love the signage that's over Washington Street when you go underneath the walkway. And it's metal kind of, I don't want to say backlit, because I know that's not approved. But I think it would be pretty cool there if there was metal sort of black or whatever in letters or something that was somehow able to be lit that identified the tenant. And I think that would be, yeah, that would, I love the backlit. So I think that would be pretty cool there and it lines up with the entrance. And so people would be able to see it very easily. So I, I always kind of envisioned that that would be great there.
I think that's a great idea myself. You'd have to run something electrical there, that's minor in what you're going to be doing to the building. Just recall that there's a maximum that we can give for letter heights based on your distance back from the building. Because you want, if you're going to do that, you'd want them probably sized more substantially.
Yeah, big. Yep.
Because of the size of the expanse there. So just, that's my thought. Mr. Sotero, comments?
Not too many. There's not too many engineering items here. It's more like architectural, like in planning issues, but, and I'll take a look at the plans, but probably just take a look at the loading dock area that they're revising. Kelly had already mentioned about they're working with the health department as far as, you know, capacity. Because as we all know, the site's been kind of used as robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, so we'll see what happens there. So the only other thing, Kelly, that I was thinking about was many, many years ago, there were some complaints by neighbors in the rear about roof leader discharges in the back. And that got me thinking about the building to the north, which houses the dominoes and the barber shop. And, you know, the roof leaders for that building came right out the front onto, you know, the sidewalk. And we didn't really like catch it until it was like built and could be a potential like icing issue. So I, I haven't really looked, looked at the plans, but I don't know if there is a plan for the roof leaders for this building. But it would be nice to see if, if it wasn't too costly to, you know, direct them into a storm, storm drain system, you know, or something like that.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. As you can see on this plan, the property line, you know, they built this building right on the property. And the, the building, the roof, definitely, I can tell you with 100% accuracy pitches from the front to the back. So from the west to the east. And I don't know, so there's existing roof leaders. We can look at that and see if there's some way to tie them in. One of the reasons that the loading dock is so deteriorated is because of that. Everything has like come down. It's undermined that loading dock. You know, so if we can get them over there and maybe do something with them, you know, this whole area is to the south, it's all.
You know, so if we can get them over there and maybe do something with them, you know, this whole area is, to the south, it's all, I blew this up, so it's, it won't let me show you what I'm talking about, but whoops. The area, that was, that was crazy. The area here to the south, you know, although it's, it's the property line, but this property to the south is commonly owned by the applicant. So, you know, we can perhaps just at least get it out daylight there. I don't think we can do anything underground, because that's that rock ledge. But even if we can get it over there, so I'll look at it. We have this big meeting on Friday with the contractors and they've been up there and droned it and looked at the roof. So let me see what their suggestions are, but I made a note about that. And we did show the truck turning template here. I don't, I think the plan is they're only box trucks. So we use the box truck template on here to show you that, I mean, obviously trucks can get in there, they've done it for years. But we did make some changes to the curbing here, so we wanted to prove that you could get trucks in and out of there. So we did provide the truck turning template on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, for me.
They, they do use box trucks, because the equipment is much smaller than it used to be, as it went high-tech, as you described it. Ms. Pardour, any comments?
I, um, we discussed the flat roof and the fact that this is an existing non-conforming structure. The board can grant building type waivers in some instances. I don't know if this counts as one of the uses that are allowed to have building type waivers, but in any event, it's non-conforming. For tonight, we have prepared a resolution to classify it as a type-two action and refer it to the Duchess County Department of Planning, Duchess County Water Waste Water Authority, Department of Health, and also to the fire district. And I can share that when the board's ready.
Thank you. And Ms. Moss?
Yes, I, I also had thought about rainwater coming off of that awning over the windows and hope that it can be dealt with effectively. Maybe it can, I don't know if there's room to create a little rock trench that it would fall into between the curb and the sidewalk, or whether that would be too much of a tripping hazard. The other thing I was wondering is if, if the architectural detail along the top line is far enough along that we could see some dimensions to it? How far out does it extend? How far apart are the little detail pieces?
The dental.
The dental piece, yes.
Yeah.
That may help. I'm glad you brought up signage, that was one of the things that I was gonna ask you about. There's a maximum square footage for a wall sign. I believe it's 32 square feet and you might need more than that for what you're talking about. So it's good to think of that in advance.
If we wanted to go with a larger sign, Ted, is that a area variance with the ZBI?
Yes.
So this board doesn't have the authority to waive that? That's the max that's permitted, okay.
Right, you can, this board can increase the letter height based on the distance back to a maximum of 24 inches. But the, the overall sign area is limited to the 32 square feet.
Okay.
And I believe it'll, Cynthia's suggestion that it all, you also need to look at design unity for the signage throughout the site.
Understood.
You have to figure out how that fits in.
Thank you for catching that, Ted. I forgot, even though we can increase letter sizes dimensionally, we can't increase the amount of space it takes up. So there's also, that is a limiting factor no matter what. So those are great, and I had, you took away one of my comments about the rainwater coming off the new canopy and overhang. That's why I asked if it was metal or what. But it would sound like and how it would feel to walk in while the water's hanging off. So the applicants will have an opportunity to respond. Let me move over to our board members, and as promised, may I call on Mr. Waters first? Rob?
Yes, you know, looking, looking at it from the front facade, it, to me, it's, it's a little flat. I, I mean, there's not, the, the building doesn't lend itself, it's a basically a box. And then, you know, now it's just replacing the windows and putting the awning over it. It lends itself to be more lineal than anything else, there's no real break. I mean, technically, there's breaks in the brick, because it steps out. But, you know, I, I would like to see something a little bit more like an industrial feel, upscale industrial feel. But I under, you know, costs, obviously, but I think it could be achieved if you think outside the box a little bit. Also, the location of the door, it pushes everything, even the windows, over to the left-hand side. So it looks like it's, the, the building is gonna tip over on that side. So, I mean, if you could centrally locate those doors in the, in the center bay, might be helpful.
Yeah. I just, on that note, we can't, this floor plan is finalized. So, and the doors, you know, if you see on the top, it's like keyed to the top. So the door, we have the doors on the corner where the existing doors are now, it's really lines up where the existing doors are now.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's why I'm saying, thinking outside the box, to, to break up that, that, I, I guess it's a horizontal feel to the, the structure. It, it doesn't look right to me, you know, and, and I was thinking more in the sense of, you know, maybe for this particular tenant or lease, we see, it might be a fine solution. But what happens if that changes at some point in time? You know, the, you, the town would be stuck with looking at this building and it's a focal point when you, when you go past that plaza. So it doesn't ma, it doesn't match the other buildings. And, and I know it's partly because of the expanse of the building, but, but I think there's ways to achieve that and keeping costs in line. It's just, again, it's just thinking outside the box. It, it has, you know, an industrial feel, but moderate, but it would change the feel of that and it would blend in with the other, the other buildings, which you did perfectly, beautiful. The Mavis building is beautiful, the, the barber shop building is great. I'm sure Feets Plus is gonna be easier, because it's, it's a smaller footprint. But this is very big and it will overpower, I believe, the other structures and, and make them get lost. So, you know, and I think then that roofing up there could also be broken up. The, the canopy over the top, and then you could run internal drainage. And as for the flat roof on top, I understand that and I understand your need to order supplies and things like that. That I have no problem with, because once the builder or whatever looks at it, they might segment that so that it comes out and scuppers and, and drains properly, so that you don't have water coming out one side versus the other. I mean, that, that, you know, they, they have foams, there's gonna be a new deck on that, I'm sure, and insulated foams and stuff like that. So, so, but, but the, the front facade, to me, it, it looks like a, I, I don't know, I, I, I just don't feel good about it compared to the other structures.
Bonnie, you sent a visual based on Rob's sort of thinking aloud at our agenda meeting. Could you, can you still share, share that on the screen and let Rob sort of tell you what he liked about it? Because it, it, it's not too far off from what you're proposing, Kelly. And also, Rob may know a certain wood type or something to construct that overhang with if you're looking for direction from the planning board. I have, I don't have it on this.
Yeah, I will share my screen. And it's not intended. Hold on here. What are you seeing? Are you, are you seeing it?
There we are.
Yeah.
There we are.
I think it's, it's, it's a reuse of a building and you could see they use different materials. It was wood, I don't know if this is colored brick or if they actually put some kind of tiling in there. And then you have this colored.
Cinder block.
Cinder block you have here, you know, they added some mulleons, there is a little planting in the front. And, and we're not saying it has to look like this, but I think it was.
Picture that with the black frames, like you had said, that, you know, there is a case where there's silver and, and the black door. That's probably because of materials they got the door. I, I don't know what they did, but if that was all black on that, that would, that, that's, I think that's a great look.
So, so the only difference is really, well, I, I've, I see the, the ledge below the glass windows, but is really is the introduction of the wood.
Yes, that's what I think.
Yeah, that, that's a planking and they use it in, I've seen it in England a lot. It's, sometimes it's a Cypress, something that's low maintenance over time. Again, I don't, I haven't priced that kind of wood in a while, so, but, but, you know, it could be cedar. But if it's treated, it wouldn't be bad, but that kind of a feel.
Someone send that, if someone could send that to me, that would be great. I can send it to you. Okay, thank you.
Even the plantings with the, plantings against the, the windows, you know, you, you have some kind of a breakup of that, that little expanse of wall. Same thing could be done on, on the other, I, you know, I know you're limited to what the walkway is there and stuff like that. I, you, you know, I haven't been over there in a while.
Yeah, the difference between that and ours is we have that sidewalk. I have to look at the depth of that sidewalk, but, and then you jump right into that main access road. So I don't know if that sidewalk is exactly five feet, I'll have to see with the distances. I mean, it would be lovely to have plantings there. I'm not sure if we have that, you know, I agree with you, it always softens it up. I'm not sure if we have room in the front, but I'll look.
Yep, yep. And then, and then the, the canopy over the door, I, I'm, you know, that could be, you know, that, that to me is, it's, that, that gives it that industrial look, like it's been around for a long time, but it's been rehabbed and refurbished into something that's office space kind of thing. And I'm just, again, long-term, that would be easier to lease later on, I, I think, because of space like that.
I think this is just to reassure the town that this is a very, very long lease for this.
Yes, this is a very long lease.
Yeah, so I think none of us will be here when this lease expires.
All right, I'd like to be alive still, Kelly.
We still have to look at it, though, that's the, that's the thing, so.
Can you see this image?
Yep, we can.
Okay.
And that sidewalk there is wide.
Yeah, we'll see what it is, you know.
Six feet.
And those column, those columns, that's what I was talking about. If, if there was even the, a gable in that center section that just gave it a little bit of lift up to that flat roof. You could do that and that would break up some of that wood needing, you know, more wood and stuff. You could just bring, pop out that center bay out to there and do a gable on that. Just something to, just something to break up that expanse on that wall, I, you know. And then you could, you could pitch back with a, a shed or whatever roof on that and that could be even asphalt as the other structures.
I'll share, yep, I'll share all this with them.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Wasser, comments?
Uh, yes, thanks, Kelly, for that presentation. I actually like the design. It's a clean, modern, industrial design. I, it's not to diminish comments that Rob or anyone else is gonna make, I'm just speaking for myself. I happen to like that kind of clean, modern look. And if you can put the image back up, it might help, I'm just, I like the metal dentil. Maybe it could be slightly thicker and show a little bit more, the dentil there on the, on the right.
Yes.
And I think the cap along the roof, that, that decorative, I don't know if decorative is the right word, but I almost feel like it's the coin we, we lost at Bella Field.
Yeah.
We got, we got some feedback. I think the contemporary sign that, in keeping with the walkway over the Hudson concept on that wall would be a great idea. I would like to see landscape, you're showing a tree on the corner.
Yep.
And so I do think landscaping is one of the ways to soften that corner. But, and I'm fine with the flat roof. I mean, I just, that's, you know, you're replacing it, which is a great thing. I also think that color will matter, how dark a gray, how dark the colors are. And, you know, I, when we see the colors, that may also have some impact on how we feel about it. But, I think that, I, I think I hit all the things that you wanted feedback on, yes?
Thank you.
You did, and I would just add that if you're going to add, because it's a delivery area, you're going to add a tree or even plantings along the front, you would want it to, number one, not include the sign that they're probably gonna put there now. And number two, you'd want something, what we call columnar, so not going out and spreading, you know, shade. You would need to sort of hug the building and stay in narrow effect, which there's several arborvitaries and Cypress's that you can do with that. So that, that is a possibility.
In keeping with the industrial concept, it could even be concrete planters.
Yeah, yeah, that's, those are good comments.
Yep, that might break up the vertical as well, okay.
Thank you, and thank you for opining on the flat roof, because that's what really Kelly needs to hear tonight. That's why I would like for everybody to be directional again. Mr. Garcia, comments?
Okay. My experience with managing buildings, okay, you can control the water flow on the roof by, if you're gonna replace the roof, my first question is what kind of roofing system are you gonna use? Are you gonna use a ballasted system or a rubber roof that's fastened down to the roof itself? You can use insulation on the top of the roof to direct the water to different parts of the roof and put roof drains in and funnel the roof out through the front of the building instead of out of the back. And from knowing that area on the right, there's a rock ledge where that loading dock is, it's all rock. So I mean, wreck the water out the back, there's no place for it to go. So I would try to bring the root, water, and that's gonna be open inside. So I try to pipe that water out to the front and down into the stormwater system in the front. As far as the front of the building, you could take care of that expanse with directional lighting going up and down the front of the building. You know, with, you could make it, like, when you look at the building, you could give it some depth by building out, you know, vertical accent and the front of that big piece of building, you know, and, and lighting, I guess, and you could take out part of that sidewalk and put plantings there.
I, I agree with that, yeah, it looks pretty wide, yep, I agree.
I mean, what kind of roof system are you gonna put on there?
I don't know, yeah, I'm not sure, it's just, that's getting outside of my wheelhouse, but I can, you know, we have a big meeting, like I said, Friday morning, so we're trying to finalize the contract and get the roof ordered. I can find out and let you know.
If you're going with a ballasted system, for people that don't know what that is, it basically, it's a floating system on the roof and they put stone on top of it and it holds the roof down in place. And then there's a rubber, rubberized roofing, which is fastened or heated to the roof itself.
I think it's the rubberized.
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't really see too many of the ballasted, like anymore.
It's always a rubber membrane roof these days, that's what we see always.
Yeah, so you could direct that water with insulation on the top of that roof.
I think that there's lots that we can do, I think the issue is where do you put it? And that's what we need to figure out is where to put it, because as you said, the one area to the south is rock, the area to the back is the property line. I think it's, everything is leading towards trying to get it to the front and perhaps, and maybe utilize it into some of these landscaping beds, but.
The good news is, is that you, you know, you have an open area inside, you could pipe it.
Yeah, yeah, to get it inside and direct it over, yep.
We would pipe, pipe the water into the storm systems back in the day. I mean, I'm not up on all the latest codes, because I've been out of the game a little bit, so.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Anything else, John?
No.
Those were excellent comments, seriously, I thank you. Ms. Dexter?
Thank you, I'm, I'm really excited to have a tenant, even considering that property, it's, it's just very cool. I, when it, you know me, when it comes to architecture, I, I'm not an expert. I did have a question, if you can like zoom in on that picture. On the, yeah, good. So just to the right of the overhang, does that wall actually bump out?
It does, if, if, if Bonnie would be so kind as to, I'll explain to you what it is. If Bonnie could go back to that area, the, I don't know what you did, Google Maps, and you had, I'm gonna show you what it is. It's, once you see it, you're like, oh, okay. So if you can go to the front of the building, that, that bump out is really where, it's weird when you take off this mansard roof, you would think. is really where, it's weird, when you take off this mansard roof, you would think that it's just flat in the back, but it's actually dimensional, so what we're gonna do is when we take off this blue elevation, three-fourths of it is that awning, and the other part of it is where you this mansard roof used to attach to the building, it's actually depressed and pushed back in. So it is dimensional.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's, so there's this, so if, so, let me just go back to, I'm gonna switch, um, Bonnie and go to my screen real quick and see if I can um, you may have to stop first, let me just say, okay, let me see if I can do this. So, I mean, I'm gonna zoom it back down. So, if this area is where that mansard extended over, and when you take it off, there's actually a dimensional difference in the building, we thought it was flat and it's not. So, what we were doing is breaking this area up. I mean, in in a perfect world, that awning could extend down further. I think it would look silly because there's no windows that it's over top of, but what we try to do is pass that, um, that break.
Okay.
That blue, that blue extends this whole distance now.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if that was, you know, an actual um, dimensional difference, it's probably what, maybe a foot or a half a foot, or, I mean, it's not big, right?
I don't think it's very big, um, it's, it's more than a foot, but I can, I can tell you what that break is, I mean, really, what we wanna know is right here. Is what's that dimensional difference?
Okay. And, and really, all I guess my point is is that with, you know, you're talking about using different materials, and, and I agree that color could make a huge difference, um between the awning and the recessed portion above it and the bumped out section in front of it, uh, along with that industrial you know, sign, um I, you know, I think just playing with that could get, we, get us where we need to be. I do, I do get Rob's point, I, it's um, but this building is just gonna always be this building.
Yeah, it's not perfect.
It's, it's not a pretty building, it was, um
Yep.
I, you know, it's a nineteen seventy-five Grand Union, um but, but I'm just kind of thinking to what to Rob's point is playing with textures, playing with colors. You do have, you have depth, you've got some depth in there, and if you can play on all that stuff, that big building all of a sudden becomes like different components.
And I'm wondering if along here, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, is if we added um, horizontally here some of that wood, and I'm, I'm premising it by, if this has not been approved by the applicant or the applicant, but if we ran the wood here in that kind of textured color, and then on top of that, we would get Design Unity, put those uh, metal letters. So that hopefully the sign wouldn't constitute the wood area, the sign would just constitute the letters. But if we put wood here across and then put those black letters on that, that that would break that side up. It could go all the way, the letters could go all the way across.
Ellie, would it be useful to bring those other elevations up, because you were showing where there was gonna be hardy plank?
Yeah, here.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I think you've got the right team working on it, and, you know, it's
Yeah, and this is
So much better with that, that blue over.
Yeah. That, and then, thank you, Bonnie, and I agree, all right, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Bonnie is actually, thank you for that cue, this top is all hardy.
Yes.
But we do have the hardy there, and then this is the brick that's being repainted, so it is, yep.
Yeah, so it's gonna, it's gonna be broken up, and I think that's what I'm looking at, is that we're going from one big box with a horrible blue awning to something that looks like there's been some attention paid to it, and, you know. Um, so I'm fine with that, I'm fine, I'm fine with the flat roof. I also, when I, soon as I saw this, it went, oh, there's where the Bellfield Hotel coin went, or not coin, the dental.
No, I said the coin.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You lost the dentals.
Yes. So I'm fine, I'm fine with all of that, and, you know, I guess when it comes down to it, I'm more concerned about the um, the drainage, you know, because if it, if it destroyed the back uh, loading dock, you know, you wanna be able to keep that
Yeah.
up and running. So
Very much, yep.
Take care of the drainage and and whatever other issues you have, and it'll, it'll look great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, as always, those were great comments, um, and I like Kelly, can you just confirm to us what the dimensional difference is, where it's set back? I think Anne asked if it was a foot, or if it was just six inches, so I think that'll help the board understanding what it's gonna look like, to see how deep that would be.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, Ms. Weiser.
Oops, hi, so um, I'm gonna back Rob up on his comments, um, because of the location. The building is poised to be considered kind of a centerpiece in the town, it's a major focal point, um, as we travel up and down Route Nine. I'm gonna again point out that architectural, architecture is invariably pu- public. So building actually makes a statement about the importance of community. So just because this building may start partially serve as a warehouse doesn't mean it has to look like one. Um, I think it should maintain the architectural cohesiveness on the site. It's essential that it relate to its neighbors and to the vision of continuing to make Hyde, make Hyde Park an appealing and charming place to live. This elevation doesn't speak to the other buildings. But I do, what I am hearing, and I love the the picture that Bonnie brought up, uh, I am hearing, you know, that you are starting to incorporate some of the ideas already that have been floated about, so I love the idea of having the wood there, I like the Walkway over the Hudson kind of signage. So ways to make it not look like a warehouse, because that's, it's, it's, it really will not help the site, it won't help, it just won't, won't be a good look for Hyde Park. So whatever you can do to make it a better, a more attractive building than what I see right now, will be really appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anne, Mr. Oliver.
Um, I really like John's ideas, um, for the drainage, I think that would be my biggest concern with the site. Um, I'm just happy to see somebody using the building, and, and I'm fine with the flat roof. I don't know, um, if I would agree with adding the wood, because I, I do like the simplicity of the design and the modern look with the colors, and, and I think, you know, like a dark gray would, would look really nice, um. And maybe just, if you could be as simple as just adding maybe two or three trees in that sidewalk somewhere to break up that expanse, it might just, I, I think maybe for this building, the simpler the better, maybe, but
Okay.
That's just my, just my input.
I think landscaping and trees will definitely help.
Just be careful, because, you know, with the salt usage on the sidewalks, it's always, always an issue with killing them, so.
Yep, for toxic, okay.
That's all, thank you, and very excited to have, uh, hopefully a vacant building become occupied.
Thank you.
I'm gonna guess that the owners are too, because it's been sitting there empty all this time and not contributing toward their mortgage payments, so. Um, I really like listening to, as always, my colleagues tonight, because it's interesting to see sort of different reactions to what's proposed and what's already been discussed about being changed, I mean, Anne Weiser hit it correctly when she said I'm already hearing things tonight that kind of excite me about how to improve this overall look. Uh, because I go back to what she said, and also what Rob said at the very beginning. Uh, this is a focal point for the community, this is probably what drags down our community more than anything else, now that the former, uh, Hyde Park Motors is gone. Uh, because it's, it's a big site, it's a big building, I should say, within a big site, and it's the very center of our town. Um, it's directly, definitely the commercial center, the town center, the, where Town Hall is, is probably the historic center now. Um, I'm just gonna throw out a couple of items that that struck me. Number one, um, I thought that John Garcia's comment about adding directional lighting to break up the mass at night might be interesting, um. We, unfortunately, in our code, you can't, you can't, we have dark sky lighting, so you can't really shoot up. But you could shoot onto it, particularly if you broke out some of the sidewalk for a bed, to create maybe three small bands of lighting uh, around those, either behind the trees or whatever you're proposing, that Chris mentioned, putting in some landscaping. Um, I also, this is just me, and I'm not an architect, and it's probably a bad idea, but when you start talking about putting the uh, wood there, Kelly, for the sign, I thought, could you expand that metal capping, could you take it out and across all the way to the end of the building, to create, to break up that, that uh, expanse to the right, at least so that there is a top and a bottom to it. That's lighting and some landscaping, I think, really would break that up. I also, at first, I, I was thinking, shouldn't you do something to make it look more like the uh, other buildings, Emergency One, um, the building where Domino's Pizza, and let me put a plugin for, uh, our locally owned um, Verizon store there, I had superb service there the other day, as well as the barber shop, um, but at any rate, I think that, because those all have a very vertical element to them, uh, with stone. But at the same time, I'm not sure, once I started looking and thinking about it, I'm not sure that putting in some sort of vertical element would do anything unless you had more than one because of the length of the building, so I'm beginning to be like Anne and Stephanie, and I think, Chris, the simplicity of what's there might really work, particularly since you're adding a new element in with the vertical hardy board across the way. I also heard, uh, from all of my colleagues that drainage is, actual thermal drainage is actually gonna be a very big issue. Um, John Garcia offered you, uh, some ideas about how to uh, pipe it to the roof, I know you can work with Pete on that, I'm not sure how much stormwater system there is here that's still intact. Create a pipe or two, but again, if there's a bed along the front, and if you can put it to, uh, maybe a neighboring parcel where it's, uh, open field rather than on rock, there's an idea. Um, but overall, I, I think that what I heard was everyone's excited about there being a tenant here, and to see the aesthetic upgrade, even as it is now, with some thoughtful additions, we'll call them. I also like your idea, Kelly, I hope that they will agree of doing the backlit letters. Um, if we, I recall, design unity and signage can be achieved by similar font styles, uh, colors, shapes, uh, and if you did a font style that's already sort of existing there, even if it's metal, I think that could help the board establish the design unity, just some ideas for you. Otherwise, we are prepared to take action tonight, and I have a question for the board. Obviously, they're gonna need to come back through and make some refinements, uh, before we probably open this up for public hearing, but if Kelly could get this to us sometime in the next month, would it be acceptable to set a public hearing for our first meeting in April, because I know they'd like to get this going? Or members who can nod, or you can say yes out loud, nod, yes. I have four people who said yes, or three who said yes at least. Um, I can't see everybody, sorry, because of the screen sharing. Rob, were you okay with setting a public hearing for the first meeting?
Sure.
Okey doke. Then make it a motion first before we do the resolution, instead of public hearing for, it would be April, is it a calendar?
Sixth.
April sixth.
I'll second it, Anne.
Thank you, all in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or nays, bringing the motion passes? And now we have the resolution, and Chris, would you introduce this one for us?
Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, the Dutch County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, and Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, Hyde Park Town Center North, Building Two. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as type two action under seeker. Two, directs the secretary to refer the site plan, Dutch County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two thirty-nine M of the general municipal law. Three, directs the secretary to refer the site plan to the Dutch County Department of Behavioral and Community Health and the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Association.
I'll second that, Anne Weiser.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Wait, wait, can we, um
Yeah, I added, um, I added Hyde Park Fire District at the end of paragraph three, so it'll go to all the agencies.
And Hyde Park Fire District.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I saw that's a motion carried unanimously, Kelly, we will see you definitely on April sixth, but we can workshop this again. Um, and if you have some preliminary before you wanna submit for a workshop, um, let me know, and we, I can pull together two of our board members to, to, I, I could pull like Stephanie and Rob, because they had to conflict or not conflicting different viewpoints uh, to help guide you along the way, how would that be?
I, I appreciate that, I'd like to try to get on that, um, maybe the second meeting in March, we'll give you our submission, and then we can make maybe some final changes for that public hearing on the sixth.
That's what I'd like to do too, because I'm hope, I'm, I'm hoping that we don't, rather that if we hear from the public, that they're all gonna be happy that they're getting to see finally, and also, since you brought it up, um, when we refer this to county planning, we're going to explain that even though there is the ready coffee kind of shown on it, the older ready coffee design, not today's, that this review is just on that portion.
Yes.
And I will defer to Victoria, but Victoria, if we were to approve this, does this not reset the clocks so that building number, uh, three would not fire?
Well, so, that's a great question, there was some discussion about how exactly we were amending this, if this was an amendment to the current plan, or if we were treating this as a standalone amendment. Um, as we drafted it, it's standalone, but we can, um I guess pin it to buildings one, two, and three, but then we're gonna have to get that whole, you know, plan set together with one, two, and three. I mean, with, yeah, the other building, so we, we can discuss that between now and the next meeting, how, how best to package this.
Okay.
Good.
We did include a note in the resolution, I know it was flashed up there and it went quickly, um, indicating that ready coffee was only shown for illustrative purposes, and that it's not part of this application.
So we'll that we give to you on, on just this property and the elevations, not the other building.
Right, because, so for the board members, particularly for John and, John, since he's learning, John Kane. Um, there is a sort of legal formal process that you have to follow, and you don't wanna mess it up, because if you're sued and if pursued, or the applicants are sued somehow strangely, um, errors like that are procedural defects, and you will lose your case, have to start all over again, we want to avoid those. And also, as Kelly pointed out, this, the traffic flow is a little different, um, from what you saw right now, but it's still similar, but it does affect, uh, the overall traffic flow to the site. Although again, it has no secret implications, because there's no seeker on this, it's a type two action, as we just classified it. So Kelly, just let us know, progress, keep me posted, you and I always have a dialogue, it's good to see you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is a new application, twice being workedshopped, this is called Cranston GM PV Panels, this is for an approval for ground mounted photo boutique panels located at one sixty-two Carmelbo Road, this is a residential uh, use, and the panels are proposed to the rear of the house, so it should not be seen, and Mr. Capaletti is here, so let me refer it over to you, Noel, take it away.
Yes, hello, how are you?
We're great.
Um. Um, yep, so we're proposing to install, uh, ground mounted solar panels, and I have the design here. I dropped it off with, uh, Catherine the other day, so I hope everybody has a copy as well. I don't know, I just didn't, I had it right here.
Take your time, we're friendly, I hope you learned by watching.
I, I just had it, I apologize. So I'll just share my screen here. Yep, so this is, this is the copy of the plan set. And, uh yeah, we're all in this backyard.
Would you like to verbally walk us through some of what you're showing?
Uh, yeah, so this is, this is the actual system, this is the design um, with all the dimensions and everything that was with all the dimensions and everything that was requested. This is my first time doing this, guys. I never.
It's okay. I'm trying to help you, that's why. You don't really need to show us all the tech, you need to show us all the technical, just describe where it's located. Describe what you're, what we're seeing there with all the blue, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so, 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 so this is his home. And this, this here is the, is the ground mount that we're hoping to install behind his home.
And can you describe the other structures that are shown besides the house?
Yeah, he's got a garage here. Here, I'll just, I can zoom that in a little bit. This is a pool house here. There's a pool here. The main house here, this, this line here represents the trenching. And this is his driveway coming down here. There's a retaining wall right here. And then this is this is a, here, this is the property view, so for the parcel, this is his parcel. Yeah, so that's his property lines right there. And those are the measurements from his property lines.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was your first time, so, but I should have told you that the board is fairly familiar with evaluating these applications. I do want to point out that I asked for Bonnie's inputs because this is a brand new application. And there's a lot going on in the rear, rather than say for Stephanie's, the next item on the agenda, because that's just really an expansion of one that already exists. But as you note, the Cromellba would be to the north as you're looking. And so this is behind his house. In addition, Mr. Cranston's house is set really far back from Cromellba in the first place. Also, it's a winding drive and Mr. Cranston is a landscaper and a stonewall fabricator, et cetera. So he's got some really interesting specimen plants as you walk up the front and to the rear and around the sides. So let me start with our consultants real quickly. Ms. Fran, any comments?
Uh, yes, I know that the solar regulations, and this is my first time reviewing solar here in the town, it's not within the zoning. And so we're looking at this plan, but I, I don't know that we have to have it, you know, as a formal site plan. But I think there's some basic elements that would be useful to have because there are references, setbacks, et cetera, to have a little bit of the zoning bulk table on it. There is some information in there, but some additional information, especially with regard to setbacks and lock coverage, you know, whatever's applicable to the zoning district would be useful. I'm looking at the plans here and I don't see a scale on them. And so I can't actually scale off whether the plans are accurate or to what extent they're accurate, unless I'm missing something. And so I think, you know, we need to kind of consider that. The other question is, when we talk about the power, if you go back to the first page of the, the drawing, at the very top left, it says, and it's a nameplate.
Yep.
We have the DC and AC. Is that kilowatt hours?
So the DC represents the size of the system being built. And the AC is what the system will produce as usable energy for his home.
So, you know, this is a question for, you know, I, I guess, Tad and for perhaps Victoria. When I go to that section of the code, the small scale solar, which is what appears to be allowed as a ground mounted solar system, small scale solar allows up to twelve kilowatt, kilowatts per hour of energy. And I don't know if this system is sized larger than that.
I believe that was, is that a state law, the statewide law?
This is the town's law.
Because I, I ran into something similar in Montgomery. And we were able to get that passed because, as I understood it, it was a state law that had been increased to twenty-five kilowatts.
Oh, well, there's twenty-five megawatts is the state law before, I think it has to go to the Public Service Commission.
Right.
Yeah, we're, right, so we're in the energy systems and facilities. It's a separate chapter from the zoning. And so it doesn't go to the ZVA, you know. I don't know that there's any waivers, but in general, if that's, if that's the kilowatt per hour size of the system, this chapter says that you can do up to twelve.
And I'm sorry, this is per year.
Oh.
Is it per year?
Yeah, kilowatts. So, so kilowatts are per year. Megawatts would be like.
Well, megawatts is, is a, is a solar facility, like a solar, large scale solar facility.
Yes, I mean, that's, that would be like New York State's, you know, energy mandates would be on megawatts. So for kilowatts, this is what his home would, this is what his home requires to offset his, you know, this is, this is how much electricity he consumes yearly is fifteen kilowatts in AC and in alternate current. So it takes a eighteen point three six kilowatt photovoltaic system in, in DC to produce that thirteen, fifteen kilowatts in AC. And that is per year.
This definitely says per hour, twelve kilowatts per hour. And I, I think we just have to look at that, only because it's a little unclear from the information on the sheet.
How many, how many kilowatts can your system produce per hour?
Well, I mean, we could, we could figure it out and break it down. I mean, if you take a utility bill that, you know, a regular utility bill, it, it, you know, regular utility bills show.
I mean, as long as it's smaller than what's allowed, I think we just need to say.
Absolutely is.
So, so if it's twelve kilowatts per, I don't know that it's kilowatts per year. It's, I'm looking at a.
So if you look at a regular utility bill here, like this is just an average person's, like they use four hundred and twenty watts a month. Right, so like an average home would consume ten kilowatts a year.
Yeah, I'm looking online and just Googling real quick. You know, it says a four, a four KW system will on average generate around three thousand four hundred kilowatt hours of electricity per year. So I'm not sure that it's twelve kilowatt per year. You know, a typical panel is two kilowatt hours per day. Another, so I think we just need to make sure we're talking in the same language. You know, what, what is this solar panel sized at? And, and per hour, because that's what the standard is for the maximum size for a kind of an accessory ground mounted solar system based on small scale collectors, if that's the case.
So what he has is, they're called Hanwha Q cells and they are three forty watt cells or panels, modules. So his, his array is made up of fifty-four three hundred and forty watt panels. And those, and that array, what this is saying is that that array will produce fifteen point two kilowatts of alternate current per year for him to use for his home. So like, because, so twelve kilowatts is like what an average home would use, twelve kilowatt or a twelve kilowatt system. So if you think in kilowatt, or if you think of like watt hours, like, you know, if you were to run the vacuum cleaner, that would be one watt. You know, so if you use nine hundred watts a month, the average homeowner would be between ten and twelve thousand watts or a year, kilowatts a year. So that, or watts a year, so that's why it's fifteen kilowatts.
Well, so again, I'm looking at, and I don't want to belabor the point. I think we just have to get the numbers right.
The definition says twelve kilowatts per hour.
Right.
And so I know.
And what is that for? What, what, twelve kilowatts an hour for what?
It's considered a small scale.
Solar collector.
Solar collector.
Right.
If you exceed that, you don't get the, you can't be a residential accessory use if you're exceeding twelve kilowatts per hour. Because the idea is that no one uses that much energy on their own.
Of course, so.
Unless you're mining bitcoin.
He's using, he's using fifteen kilowatts a year.
So I don't, I don't think it's per, I don't think that's per year. I think that's the issue. I'm looking at here, how much energy does a house use? Twenty nineteen residential customers purchased an average of ten thousand six hundred and forty-nine kilowatt hours of electricity. This works out to about thirty kilowatt hours per day. So I think your fifteen kilowatt. So that's a question. What is your fif, what is the fifteen kilowatts? Fif, I'm sorry, thirty kilowatt hours per day. So I think your kilowatts design may be per hour.
No. That would be.
Because this is saying on average, an average home.
If we produce that much, that would shut down the grid. That would literally.
These aren't megawatts, these are kilowatts.
It would turn into megawatts.
Can I, can I, can I suggest that for purposes of this discussion? We allow this application to proceed tonight and have Mr. Capaletti submit a letter explaining how the kilowatt hours works. This is going to be an issue for the next application as well, which is actually the expansion of an existing ground mounted solar facility. But, you know.
So twelve kilowatt, so twelve kilowatts per hour is the max that, that a residential can produce. Right, that would be, yeah, so that's what.
Just, just provide, yeah, just provide the calculation. What have, what have they sized the system for in, in hours? If it's one, if it actually translates into like one kilowatt per hour, then we just need to have that on the plan, just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
And we could also have, we could also have our electrical engineer like look at it. You know, also, yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing differing numbers on, on Google and this is not the way to do an analysis. So I think Pete, if he could take a quick look at it and then.
Yeah, it's beyond my pay grade, but I'll have one of our, you know, electrical guys do it.
Right. So those, that was really it. I mean, just making sure that there's a scale on the map so we can measure out distances, et cetera, that there's a bulk table just to make sure we're within the lock coverage and everything else that Tad had reviewed as part of her initial review. And then checking on that twelve kilowatt hour size and whether it's fitting within that. Then I think we may have lost our applicant.
I don't know. And I think he left for a little bit, but it's, I think the calculation also depends on how much sun the solar panels get per day and all the other variables. So I think we should let them provide that information to us.
Yes, I, I think it was probably a way that the town was trying to control the size of those ground mounted solar collectors. So it's only going to be a certain size based on the solar panels are using and how much it can generate. So again, we just want to compare apples to apples.
So I apologize, guys. I don't know what happened. The internet went down. It's okay. It's okay.
So sorry.
Don't worry, it's okay. We, we were just discussing about continuing to have an offline conversation between you and Pete Sotero Engineer. He's going to have his electrical engineer take a quick gander at it to make sure that we're all on the same page. The, the purpose for this restriction that limits actually the amount of kilowatt hours per day that can be produced is the town, when it was writing up its various solar laws, was concerned about the size of someone calling it a small scale residential use, that's all. So we wanted to make sure that everything's been sized appropriately. And Pete, Cindy, I can hook you two up by email. She, she can give you Noel's email and she can give Noel your email, okay?
Yep.
Any other comments from you, Pete, besides having your EE take a look at it?
No.
Tad, any comments?
No, we, we had talked about whether or not the, there is screening from the adjoining residents to the, I think it's the east or the south, the east, I think.
It's to the east.
And I don't think we've talked about that yet.
Yes, the section of our law that deals with this does require some screening. No, yes, there you are, sorry, Noel, Noel. Typically, we've, we want to keep this low cost, so we don't add to the expense for the homeowner because we're all interested in trying to see the conversion to more solar power, et cetera. So what we typically do is have, suggest something like Forsythia hedge that could be planted so that as it grows, it doesn't ever occlude the sunlight. You can keep it far enough away that there would be no chance of that, but it could also from a bramble so that during the winter, you really can't see through it. That'd be up for you to talk to Mr. Cranston about what he wants to put in, because of course, he has access to lots of plants. That's what he does for a living. But screening is required and there is a residence that during leap off seasons could see some of this. And we might hear from that resident when we set the public hearing. So good comments from you, Tad, that was going to make that comment myself. And Victoria, do you have anything additional to add?
Um, I, I just want to clarify that the project is subject to site plan approval under the zoning code that the planning board can grant waivers for any material that's not needed. You know, we don't need to undertake full scale site plan review if you don't need all that information. And we have a resolution prepared tonight, classifying it as a type two seeker action because it's a residential accessory structure and referring it to county planning because when you do the calculations, it is within five hundred feet of a state or county highway.
Absolutely it is. So let me go to the board as for comments. Vice Chair Dexter, may I start with you since you have been in this field before?
Excellent discussion. I don't really have any comments. I believe that the per hour would preclude this, but I, oh, wait to see the calculations.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I don't have much to add to this conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Gercio?
And the only thing I, I got to add is that a generator on your property usually by nine to ten kilowatt generator. So to me, if they're letting those go in, I don't think fifteen kilowatts, and I'm not an expert in this area, is just from common sense. You know, is exceeding whatever that level is. I think there's a mix up on the calculations. Because I've, I've seen generators put in. And, you know, I know people that have thirteen kilowatt generators on their property.
Yes, but John, the question is, is it thirteen kilowatts per hour or per day? What is, what does it apply to?
I think there's another solar person here, isn't there? Yeah, it's kind of avoid conflict of interest there. Oh, I don't know if they could better explain it, but you know. The best way I can clarify it is that DC kilowattage is usually measured in KWH. They just say KW. So usually the KW in DC will be larger than the AC kilowattage naturally. But it's, you know, it's just a, really the unit. It's not saying that this array produces that many kilowatts in an hour. That's, it's a fractional amount of power produced in a single hour, a single day. Even, you know, by a fifteen KW system, you know, that you're installing residentially, that's even larger than the one, you know, the project I'm working on here. So it's, the best way I can clarify it is it's just a question of units. There's no way that a, that a, even a larger system could, could really produce so much energy in an hour unless you have an enormous solar field like on a commercial scale, like, you know, you mentioned before.
It, it seems to be what, that somehow when the, when the solar law was written, it was a measure of how big the system can be. So it must be related to. So it must be related to the panels and the, just again, the, the size of the panels and the potential of how many kilowatts it can be generated. So you're saying typically they drop the H off, but it's usually DC KWH and AC KWH.
Correct. They just, they really just say KW now. Um, they don't even put the H anymore. But like, for example, if I was getting a Tesla solar power wall battery installed that can store power from a solar array. The DC kilowatt on that Tesla power wall from the solar, um, you know, load side would basically be um thirteen point five kilowatt hours. But that unit is how much, uh, I guess, i- it's basically just like a rate of discharge, really. It's not so much like the size. So to go back to what you were saying in terms of clarifying the size of the system based on panels. Like, for example, this project is involving LG four thirty fives. They're four hundred and thirty five watt panels. If you add up the amount of panels, uh, you know, so a four hundred and thirty five watts per panel times thirty six panels. Then you get the total KW system size. It's not really a matter of how much it's producing in any given time. It's just the potential size of like the produced materials, if that makes sense.
And would it, and would the spec be, again, because that's a great discussion as far as how it's measured. So you have the solar panels with the wattage then multiplied, which at some point becomes kilowatt, right? Um, so.
Once you get over a thousand watts, basically, you're out of, you're out of.
At a kilowatt, right. So, so is the standard when you're describing these panels? Again, is it like, are they sized based on kilowatt hours, whether or not they're actually producing that amount? Is that how they're, how the spec, was that what the spec is?
That's not, I don't think that's how they determine the wattage of the panels, but I've never actually been involved in production, so I can't fully answer that. But I, that, that number per watt, like for wattage per panel does not come from rate of discharge, I don't think. Um, but, you know, that, to elaborate on that, I think it's also like, whatever unit it would be, it would be like over one unit, if that makes sense, of time. Um, so either way, I still don't think it would be like kilowatt hours per se. Um.
Yeah, it's interesting because it may be something to, to visit as far as the standard. Because maybe it says kilowatt hours, but it was really kilowatts. Um.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but thank you for that.
Of course, yeah. I hope that clarified something, but.
Victoria has put a section of code because it's in the definition itself. And I know this is probably boring anybody who might be watching this uh remotely. But it's, this is the first time we've had a small scale so that would seem to have this much wattage. Again, this is why I asked Bonnie to kind of dig into this for us. So um, let's let Pete's person help clarify this because I'm, it's, it's beginning to dizzy even my brain. And I remember I, I've learned a lot about sewer and other things I never thought I had to learn about. So this is one more area that we need to familiarize ourselves with more often. Um, let me go to the next board member. Ms. Wasser, comments?
I have no comment. I'm just very happy that Brian is representing me. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
And Mr. Waters?
I, I just, the only thing is on the, on the um plan view, um, you know, that's showing a retaining wall. So I, I am assuming the panels are below that or that grade goes up to the backyard. Uh, not that, that, that matters, but it's in a driveway. It looks like a parking area for a driveway. Or is the driveway going to be widened now? What text order of the panels being, uh, is there, I, I don't know if these things, you know, if they ground, you know, how are they grounded? What, you know, can you get a shot if you run into it with a car? I mean, I don't know.
So it was just, um, it was just dirt and he, he just, he just put some item four over it and he just.
How many internet issues is again?
Yeah, so, so I mean, there's no, there, there should be a measurement from the edge of that to the panels, I think, I think, just for clarifying. So we could get a scale like, like, uh, I think, uh, somebody had mentioned scale. There's no scale on it. So you don't really know how, how big those, that area is.
Okay, I can get all that for you.
Great. Um, so I also don't have it. Those were great comments, by the way, Rob, good catches. Um, I also don't have any comments. This is a bit above my pay grade, as they say, as well. Um, but we are prepared to circulate this and we're circulating it to basically county planning. Um, we'll also classify the action, but we're circulating it to county planning. And I'm going to assume that this is good enough still to go to county planning because even though it doesn't have a zoning table, it may not have a scale. County planning reviews this for kind of how it affects countywide, the impacts, countywide impacts. I don't think Heather's going to find any. So I think this is still uh okay to go. And if you all agree, then um I'm going to ask John Gercio to introduce this resolution.
Okay, uh, resol- resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutch County Department of Planning and Development. Dated February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, resolution number two zero two one dash five one. Whereas the applicant Jason Cranston has submitted an application for site plan approval. For the installation of ground managed solar system to serve existing residential structure on property located at one sixty-two Cromwell Tax Parcel Number six two six five dash zero three dash zero seven three zero two five in the Green Bell Zoning District. The property and whereas the project is depicted on site plan entitled photo volatic system prepared by Plug GP, Plug PV LLC dated February seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Sheets PV one, PV two, PV three, PV four, PV five, PV five point one, PV six. And she it's one, two, three, entitled Plug PV LLC by Solar Foundations USA dated June sixth, two thousand twenty-one collectively to site plan set. And whereas, 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 whereas pursuant to section two, three, nine dash M of the General Municipal Law. Projects located within five hundred feet of the county highway must be referred to Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development for important recommendation thereof. Now thereof be resolved that the planning board hereby classified the project as a type two action under CCor. Directs it secretary to refer the site plan to Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two, three, nine M of the General Municipal Law. That's it.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
I'm muted too. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May they use your extensions. The most motion carries unanimously. And I believe we were going to set a public hearing on this for March the sixteenth. So we could have, allow county planning time in which to respond and also to allow Mr. Capelletti to make some revisions. And now in this case, we also allow Mr. Satar's engineer to try to help us figure out this morass of confusion over kilowatt hours versus kilowatts, et cetera. So make it a motion to set this for March sixteenth.
I'll make that.
I'll make up.
Sorry.
Second hand, Weiser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I know, Victoria, I'm going to have a discussion with you about this Wild West uh thing while we're on Zoom later on.
Well.
Anyway, the motion passes unanimously as well. So Noel, feel free to get in touch with us through Cynthia at any time. And as soon as we have an analysis by Pete, it was saying that we can all comprehend and we'll move forward. Uh, but we did resolve this and perhaps it was an error in our zoning. I'm not positive. Um, terminology seems to have evolved apparently, so we'll figure this out and make sure that Mr. Cranston gets what he needs to start going on this. So we had a few hiccups along the way.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much.
We look forward to welcoming you to working with you further. And if you, like I said, if you need anything, just have Cynthia. She'll get in touch with me. Okay?
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night.
The next item on the agenda is another application for uh portable take panels. This is for, the applicant is actually Stephanie Wasser, Stephanie and Stephen, her husband. So she's recused this application.
I am recusing myself.
I'm officially appointing.
Brian.
Thank you. I'm officially appointing Mr. Kane, our new alternate, to be the board member who's going to serve for this application until it's done. So let me turn it over to Mr. Flynn. I hope we're not going to go through the same process we just.
Oh, I, I'm, I will say this one's actually going to be even a, a bigger question because they already have an existing solar brand on the property and they're doubling it in size. So they will also need to provide calculations to show that they're under um the threshold.
Mr. Flynn, let me turn it over to you. Do you want to walk us through or just describe what you're proposing?
Sure. Good evening to the board. Thank you for having me here. I'm here on behalf of Sun Common, representing uh Stephen Wasser and Stephanie Wasser. Um, they're at eleven Nikris Lane in Statsburg. Uh, we're going uh for approval for a small residential system of twelve KW. Um, it's ground mounted solar array. Um, that's an expansion to the existing system on site. Um, it's also going on the western side of the parcel in the backyard. Uh, the total square footage of this array uh will be nine hundred and seventy-two square feet. Uh, that brings the total square footage of this array um the, to one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two point three roughly square feet. When considering the uh, the existing area of um the system that's already in place. Uh, that's about one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. Um, so altogether, as I said, it's about uh, you know, nearly nineteen hundred square feet um in total of area age, uh, of area, um, you know, coverage for this array. Um, that does imply with uh the, the fifteen percent impervious uh coverage parameters for the Green Bell District here. Um, the fifteen percent coverage would be at roughly sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-three square feet. Um, so we're well within that um, uh, as we are just shy of nineteen hundred square feet. Um, also, chapter one hundred and thirty, section six, um subsection D, um outlines that of your code. Uh, outlines that no freestanding solar collector shall exceed twenty feet in height. Uh, will be in compliance with that as well. The max height is, is not even going to be eleven feet for this array. Um, I know your setback requirements um aren't, uh, you know, too strict here uh for these projects. We have a, a fifty uh front and fifty foot front and rear setback requirement and a twenty-five uh foot setback requirement for side setbacks. Um, our setbacks are, uh, you know, four hundred and nine feet um uh in the front, uh one hundred and ninety feet in the rear. And our respective side setbacks are eighty-one feet and eighty-eight feet. So they're all in compliance as well with the setback requirements. Um, this solar collector will also comply with um all your screening requirements outlined in chapter one hundred and thirty, section six, um subsection E. Um, it's in the backyard, as I said, um of this parcel. Um, most of the array is uh screened by existing foliage there. A lot of uh forests, but we did incorporate some screening um of holly trees. Um, uh, there'll be eight planted on the north side of the array, um, just so we're fully compliant with this section of your code for screening. Uh, the array will be roughly, um, uh, let's see, it will, it will involve three SMA inverters. SMA in America is the, the inverter um manufacturer that we use for all of our ground mounted solar arrays. Um, and it'll be uh thirty-six LG four hundred and thirty-five uh panels. Um, and it should be classified, I believe, as a type two accessory structure under secret as well. Um, just like with that previous project there. Um, in terms of uh kilowatts, uh total KW, I can, um, I have that number for you here. The existing system size is twelve KW. Um, and our, our new system is, is actually roughly the same size. Um, I had mentioned it being twelve KW, but the new system will actually be thirteen KW. Um, so the total AC system size will be twenty-five KW altogether. Um, in terms of uh kilowatt hours, um, you know, I, I don't have the exact number of how much this array would produce in any given day um or hour, but I do know that, um, you know, uh, it will produce far less energy than that in any given day. Uh, you know, it, it'll be well within, within owed and under that number of, of kilowatt hours. Um, you know, it'd be honestly pretty impressive if, if these arrays were that efficient. So that's all I can say there. Um, but yeah, so the total system size will be a total of twenty-five KW AC. Um, once this new array is in and it will, it will be intertwined if you, if you have the one line diagram in front of you. If not, I can, I can pull it up for you as well. Um, but altogether, you know, we, we will um be tying in uh in this, you know, tying these two systems together um to interconnect to the grid. Um, and if you'd like, I could share my screen real quick and just show you the um, the electrical diagram. Okay. Not everyone can see this here. It's our array layout and here's our one line electrical drawing. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this just outlines how we're tying these two systems together. Um, so we're still gonna, you know, interconnect to the grid. Um, uh, here you just see that, you know, we're, we're taking everything from the inverters. Um, and then we're, we're just tying in um in the basement and in an AC combiner uh panel. Um, and then from there, you know, we kind of move through a, a few other uh meters and disconnects and everything and, and interconnects. Um, you know, to the grid there. But if you look right here where this combiner panel is, um, you'll see that there's branches off here leading to the, to the existing array. Um, those inverters, um, I believe are at the array as well, um, judging from the, the site data and the evaluation photos we have on file. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to be clear that, that these, this is technically still an expansion. Um, so we will be interconnecting these, these two systems into the grid together. Um, obviously, the, the existing twelve KW system is already interconnected, but we'll, we'll be tying in in the same, uh, basically at the same junction, just to be clear.
Thank you. Um, I don't think we're going to have comments from consultants. Except for clarifying the kilowatt thing, which could be done, I guess, with two birds with one stone, as they say. Uh, Ms. Moss, did you have any comments on this? Okay. Um, and it has, it's as noted uh by Mr. Flynn, it is screened by holly trees, eight of them, which the board has had a chance to take a look at, I know. So let me quickly ask for comments from the board. Um, Ms. Dexter?
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No comment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Gercio?
None. No comments.
Ms. Weiser?
No comments.
Mr. Kane has been patient, sitting here through two and a half hours of a meeting. Comments?
No comment.
Questions? I thought so. Sorry. I also have no comments, but I'm going to ask Mr. Kane to introduce the resolution classifying the application and referring it to DC planning.
Sure. Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. Um, whereas, whereas whereas, 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 whereas now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby one classifies a project as a type two action under a Secra. Uh, two directs it secretary to refer site plan to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section twenty-three, two thirty-nine M of the General Municipal Law.
Second, Ann Dexter?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May they use your extensions. The motion carries unanimously. Um, Pete, do you think we're gonna get a, a sort of resolution done on, or do you think you can get a memo to us explaining the kilowatt hours issues?
Yeah, so just to clarify, you know, like on both of these applications, so you're just looking to see if their proposal uh meets, meets the section of the code in regards to, you know, the twelve, right?
Definition, yep.
So on the previous application, though, didn't he need to provide us some clarification?
Yes.
Well, so Pete, I think this is why you need to talk to your engineer because I think the numbers of the system are not necessarily the same as what it can produce per hour, what it's capable of producing. Because I think it's in a best case scenario with twenty-four hours of sun versus.
That's what it sounds like.
This is what we need your input on.
It, it seems, it's almost, I think of it like, if you think about a septic system, you may have a system that's sized for three thousand gallons per day. You may not use that amount, but it's the size that you've developed. And I think the kilowatt hour must have been some size that they decided that would be the max, regardless of how much you may use, which is. that you've developed. And I think the kilowatt hour must have been some size that they decided that would be the max, regardless of how much you may use, which is going to be variable. You know, kind of like a septic system. But what's confusing is kilowatt hours, you can kill, you have kilowatt hours per day, kilowatt hours per. So that's, that's what's confusing. Yeah. Kilowatt hours per hour.
All right, I'll ask, I'll, um, I'll ask him, because that's, that's something that's not really in my bailiwick.
I don't know, it was either. The reason why I ask is we could set the motion, we could, uh, set a public hearing for March the second. We need to have this clarified before we could take action.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then making a motion.
Have escrow for these two applications?
You do for the first. I don't think we did for the second.
Michael, can I ask a question? The other one.
We should set escrow and split it between the two, since the question applies to both.
Yeah, we're not going to need, we're not going to need much.
Yes, Ann.
Um, so the other one, we said, uh, the public hearing for the 16th, didn't we?
Because he has to get new plans that have both, uh, zoning regulations.
No, because, um, they both had section two thirty nine M, right?
Oh, that's right. This one does too. We should set it for March 16th. You're exactly right. Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Um, Mr. Kane, you are released from duty for now, but we will see you on March 16th. And I hope there'll be more action, livelier action or something. Thank you for the sticking with us and I, I hope this helped you understand more of what we do here, but I know you've been watching anyway.
Very much so. Thank you, guys.
And as long as I'm just good, welcome this in there. I, I, I like having younger people here because I'm going to be aging out soon and we need to have a younger cohort. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go crack open the, the book I have on solar. I spent some time, I took the class of years ago. It's, I'm trying to remember it now, but I'm just out of curiosity. I'm going to go back and look. It's been about 10 years now, but I, I took a certification for it.
Wow.
And I think KWH is when the meter turns. So when your digital meter turns one, that's one KW or kilowatt hour. So I just have to go and remember is a DC they to AC and how does it convert? I, and, and when, you know, when it, the inverter switches it, all that good stuff. So I'll go take a look and maybe I can.
Thank you, John. If you can communicate, you can write a memo and send it out to the planning board, send it to Cynthia and Chilton, that if you want, if you feel like you have the energy and time, et cetera. Cause we're going to rely on you. And by the way, Mr. Flynn was nodding just now when you were talking about the digital meter. So I, your memory is probably serving you better than what you think.
Oh, good. Glad to hear it.
Oh, Ms. Wasser, you're welcome back up and consultants, you're welcome to leave. Uh, these are just two resolutions. One extending the time in which, uh, they have to satisfy conditions of approval. Because DOT has been dragging its feet for some reason, and the other is for Gulf signage, uh, located at Van Dam and Alpe Post Road. And we have a recommend, uh, recommend date. Let me rephrase that. The science code compliant as per tat. So it's up to you guys if you want to stay. So the next app, item on the agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. The next item on the agenda is a request for site, for site plan extension which to meet the conditions of approval. I believe Mr. Andrews popped on. So John, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, um, we got our resolution of approval back in August of 2020. We were making good progress responding to the Department of Health, but we've kind of put everything on hold, waiting for DOT. Um, we got comments from DOT late. And then to be quite honest with the board, um, we had a, a little personnel change in our office and it, it got lost on that gentleman's desk and I was sitting here waiting for a response. Thinking it had gone back in and it had. So I take full responsibility, but in any event, we never would have been able to get a response from DOT within the available timeframe. So we therefore find ourselves in a position of requesting an extension. And thanks to the good advice from both Cynthia and Mr. Dupree, we asked for both at the same time. I have a tendency to be an optimist and I should use that in dealing with DOT. So we're asking for the two 90 day extensions, please.
Anybody have any questions or comments for John, Mr. Andrews? Okay, I'm going to ask Ann to introduce this resolution.
Resolution granting two 90 day extensions of time to satisfy conditions of approval for the Gleason family properties. Resolution number 2021 dash 14B, whereas, whereas, whereas now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90 day extensions of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval to and including August 15th, 2022. Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries unanimously. John, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you very much. And my client very much appreciates it, but she is very anxious.
I, I, I know. I'm copying on some emails. She, she initiates them sometimes.
Oh, yeah. So, uh, believe me, I, I've heard it. So thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
You too.
Bye now.
The last item on the agenda is a signed permit recommendation for both freestanding.
There's two more items.
Oops. You're right.
Here.
Let me, let me rephrase that. I'm looking at an old, I mean, I printed something out. I got cut off. My apologies. Um, I have my own comments on them. That's why. Two more items. The first will be for Gulf signage. This is the fueling station that's located, as I said, at the northeast corner of Van Dam and Route nine. Um, there was supposedly a staking, but when I got back today and went over, there's a green metal pole that is kind of sticking out over. So I had a tape measure with me.
Am I on? Just so I know.
Yeah.
It's Nancy.
Hey Nancy, I measured and Nancy, I'm, I'm not positive that there's, you're going to be able to put the posts and the planter there the way I measured, but I couldn't find where it started. I was told by Howie, our highway superintendent, see, he ran into you. There's about two feet from where the current sign ends. So from what I could see, you may have to shrink it a little bit in the width, but I, I may have been measuring correctly and exactly. So, um, but we are prepared to, we have resolutions prepared for both. And does anybody have any questions or comments about this?
So you know then that it, it, it will be from Route nine, it'll be set back um, another two feet from Route nine. If you look at that photo where I kind of marked underneath the three, it was really lousy conditions there when we were there. And I understand what you're saying. Um, if we set back a little bit further also from Toowoiler as well as two foot nine. Yeah. And, um, we will be a little bit further off the road in both directions. Uh, from the sidewalk of Toowoiler and from Route nine. And it was a little confusing. We did a lot of measuring because you do have the entrance and exit on both of those, but we will be, we will not be cutting off any of that.
Oh, I, if you will, uh, unless you, I guess I'd say put a post inside the concrete. I mean, it's curved. So I, I couldn't figure out exactly where it was, but I did have a tape measure. So we, we will cross our fingers that it's going to be to the width that you require it. But I will say this, if it's not, then the post would have to shrink or the planter would have to shrink or something else, because it, it narrows, as you know, the sort of on the curved island there, it's curved on one side and it narrows as you go further east on Toowoiler. And I'm sorry, I kept saying Van Dam, it's Toowoiler. My apologies. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Thank you, Nancy, for clarifying everything as we went along on this process and also the food mark portion has been added to the freestanding sign. If everybody saw that. So I believe Ms. Weiser will introduce the first resolution.
All right. Resolution recommend, recommendation for issuance of signed permit pursuant to town code section 108 dash 24.3A 4D food mark, February 16th, 2022. Resolution number 2021 dash 32, whereas, 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 whereas uh, be resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for the wall sign for the convenience store food market at the Gulf Station based on the sign permit application submitted by Nancy Forst on June eighth, eighth, 2021.
Second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and I believe that Mr. Oliver will introduce the second resolution.
Can I just interject one thing here? Um, when you get to the therefore be resolved, the last revised to be replaced with February 10th, 2022. That was the last version you received with the food mark. Moving over.
Said February 10th?
Yep, 2022.
Okay. Resolution recommendation for issuance of signed permit pursuant to town code section 108 dash 24.3A 4D Gulf. Resolution number 2021 dash 32A, whereas, 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 whereas be resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for the freestanding sign for the rebranding of, to Gulf based on the signed permit application submitted by Nancy Forst on June eighth, 2021, and last revised February 10th, 2022.
I second that. Ann Weiser. You're muted. Sorry.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, colleagues. Passed unanimously. Now the last item on the agenda is.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Is request for a site plan waiver. This is to be repair the roof deck and other elements of the house, including landscaping, um, that were destroyed a while back by a, a really bad storm. As I said, this is on my way home and I drive by it all the time and I was beginning to fear that no one was going to repair it, um, because this is in a scenic overlay district. Uh, it does require site plan waiver or review, one of the, one of the two. Um, this is not really visible from the historic sites and it would be minimally visible, if at all, from the river, even if all trees were cut because of an existing ridge line. Um, that noted, anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
This is for the, I, I'm hoping we're going to say this right. Zhao, Joe, family will be introduced by Mr. Waters.
Site plan waiver, town code section 108 dash nine point four. Resolution 2022 dash zero five. Uh, whereas a request of the site plan waiver has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Joe, Ju, Joe for the repairs to his home due to a fallen tree. The house is located at 61 Fuller Lane. And whereas, 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 whereas therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the plant requirements for the repairs as described in the building permit received by the building department, January 28th, 2022, last revised February 8th, 2022. And per the request of the planning board dated February 8th, 2022.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And now may we, and may I get a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Stephanie Wasser.
Second.
So simultaneous, I can't tell you, you actually raised your hands. It was like watching mirrors for me.
That's a split second. That's a kilowatt.
Yeah.
Cynthia, you pick.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you, Peter, for, uh, recording this for general public and thank you to Supervisor Torjiani uh, for providing the resources to show this on public as well. And we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome back.